I'm going to walk, do the roll call, fix serandria here. Phil Rogers, Ned Dalton.
Here.
Vincent Giannetta. Oh Ned, you're there?
Yeah.
Okay. Vincent Giannetta.
Here.
Roger Mitchell.
Here.
Gary Shingo.
Here.
Jeff Franson. Marie Genovese. Okay, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Gary sit in for Phil Rogers. Okay? And next, I'm gonna read the, the rules for the, um, ground rules for the, for the, uh, for the public hearing. The applicant's representative will make his foremost presentation to the board stating its specific hardship and precisely why this merits a variance from the zoning regulations of Towne Water Town. All comments, discussions, and observations shall be made through the chair after proper recognition by the chairman. That is necessary to ensure that only one person at a time speaks on any issue, thus making it easier for everyone to understand and for clearer legal transcriptions. All persons addressing the commission shall begin by first clearly stating their name and address for the record. If necessary, the person may be asked to spell these or her name for the record. Following the presentation of the application, the zoning board of appeals will ask specific questions of the applicant. After the board has asked its questions of the applicant, I shall then allow any members of the public who wish to speak either in favor of this application or against it to address the board. I shall then allow the applicant to respond to the comments of members of the, of the general public. I should then allow any members of the general public who wish to present any additional information or clarifying discussion to do so at that time. I shall then provide an opportunity for the applicant to respond to these, to these additional remarks if he or his representative so wishes. The zoning board of appeals has thirty-five days from the date of the public hearing commence to complete the public hearing. The board may ask the applicant for a thirty-five day extension of the public hearing period if the board requires any additional information or wishes to schedule a sidewalk to observe situation for themselves. The zoning board of appeals has sixty-five days from the date when the public hearing is closed to render its decision. The board may or may not make its decision tonight at this regular meeting following the public hearing. You may stay for the regular meeting if you wish, or you may leave at the end of the public hearing and contact the zoning office the following morning to determine the status of your application. Application number twenty twenty dash seven of Deborah Delacroche for a variance of ten feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a front porch to be located twenty-five feet from the front property line at Randor Lane, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R twelve point five residential zoning district. Uh, the secretary read the legal notice.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, does one, there is also, uh, procedures for the virtual meetings that you should read it, do you have it?
Oh, yeah.
Can you please read that, you are Mr. Dalton?
Okay, this is a web-based virtual meeting, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session, this session is being recorded both video and audio. Mark Masoud, Masoud, the land use administrator, and Mike Musimans, the town's IT director, will be the meeting administrators. A link to the, to the video audio will be posted through the town's website. Most people attending this meeting will be muted. The commission, the commissioners and the staff will not be muted, however, in order to minimize disruptive audio feedback, all participants should keep themselves on mute until ready to speak. Individuals will be unmuted at the time they are recognized, asked a question, or make a presentation. Presentations may be made by applicants and their agents when appropriate, when appropriate and permitted by the commission. Other attendees will be permitting, permitted to speak only during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Commissioners and staff will, will generally be keeping video, will generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting, unless they are attending via telephone only. Applicants and members of the public should feel free to leave their video on or off. However, there will be, they will be asked to turn their video when speaking. A picture tells a thousand words and can be useful in conveying your meaning. Videos, video is not available. You and you will not be precluded from speaking or providing public testimony. During public hearings, individuals desiring to speak will be asked to state their name and give their, and give their home address. We will read the pub, we will read the public hearing rules at the start of the first public hearing of the meeting. Please use the chat feature or the ra, or raise your hand feature for meeting administrators to know that you've raised your hand to speak. If an applicant or agent needs to submit additional documents to the commission, which was not distributed in advance of the meeting with the rest of the materials, the application will be continued to the next meeting so that the new documents can be made available to the public. Members of the public may only speak during a public hearing. If, if a member of the public speaks outside of the public hearing or creates an audio or video disruption, disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the meeting administrators or the chair.
Can I ask you a question, Rick?
Good.
Why do we skip over item A?
Okay. I just want to tell you that the secretary is recording.
I don't know if you heard me, Rick?
He's locked down.
He's locked up, yes?
He's locked down.
He's locked down? He's muted.
Item A?
It just says, uh, continue.
Anyway, our last meeting. It's the first item on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
Okay, see it?
Are we skipping over there for some reason?
Well, you were skipping the first one.
I see it, it's just, but that's the regular meeting agenda.
No, you should, it's part of the public hearing.
Item A?
Just follow the application, because item three A. Second thing.
I don't have it.
Do you want me to read it?
Are you talking about?
This is where we went for the, for the walk tonight.
I, I got it right here, okay, I have it. Okay, first item on the agenda is item A, continuation of a public hearing for application twenty twenty of Ian Eppack for a variance of twenty-five feet to a front yard property line setback for interior lots for construction, three foot by forty-two foot barn to be located fifty feet from the front property line at one seventy-three Chimney Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R ninety residential zoning district. Is there anyone here to, to, uh, represent the applicant?
He's joining now.
Okay, can you hear me here?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm meeting right back, one seventy-three Chimney Road.
Yes, he did, he says Henry, this is Henry.
Okay. Now, this is my time, I can't talk.
Can everyone, can everyone be quiet? He's trying, he's trying to talk, the applicant's trying to speak.
Here's, here's the audio pinned here.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, so you guys came out to walk through today and, uh, looking to push my barn that I want to build a little bit further away from my setback and my driveway. Um, I had some ledge to contend with and I want to move a little bit further away from that too. Um, you know, I, I think that I still would be a decent ways away from my front neighbor with the trees blocking and, uh, still be fifty feet or more away from, um, the one I'm all done. Went there today and, uh, that's why I suggested that we come out to see your, uh, your property and where you're putting, where you're locating that barn is in, is in a, a good area and you have woods all around you, plus you have five acres, so it is a good spot for the barn. Did, uh, did everyone have a chance to go over there and see this property?
For Rick, uh, Rick, for the record, I'd like to say, I just say a few minutes late when I do this. Do it at seven or six to see.
Okay, Ned, did you get a chance to look at it?
I was there, Roger.
Roger was there, Vinnie, you were there.
Yes.
And Ned, did you get a chance to see it? Ned?
No, no, I didn't.
Yeah. Okay, uh, does anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant?
I just have one point, you know, the sketch that you have that was submitted shows a, uh, ten-foot wide door opening, garage door opening, and I believe you now have two garage door openings.
Um, yeah, honest, I'm undecided on the door. Uh, that's gonna be on my budget in the end, whether I'm gonna be able to fit two doors there or one door. Um, two doors isn't really necessary, I may just put one door. Okay. Okay, is there anyone else from the board wish to ask the applicant any questions?
He doesn't really have any place else to put that thing.
Right. Okay, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Hearing on, we have a motion.
Just one second to make sure that we don't miss anybody.
Pardon?
Let, let just hold the voice.
Okay.
Believe Roger is, he no longer has, doesn't look like he has audio.
No, fully Roger is a commission member.
Is it reasonable? You should let him, yeah. Should I promote him?
Yeah. Yeah, he is a commission member.
Rick?
Yeah.
Uh, Roger, I have a question, question, question. Office use only, it says the barn should be less than twenty feet high. On the following page with the diagram, it's showing the peak at twenty-six.
Okay, so it, it shows the peak of the roof is at twenty-six feet, just to get adequate pitch, but the collar ties are actually below twenty feet.
Mr. Aldrich? That we, as we, so we, the commissioner of the, we don't go all the way to the peak. It can be the midpoint of that, the roof. And that, yes, the twenty feet is correct, I, I started trying. We don't make that off the, the top of the peak of the roof. It's a, to the midpoint.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Everyone from the board, all staff?
Would that, Rick, would that difference in the height make a difference to the variance?
It's still the size of the barn, that, that's what we're looking at.
It's still, it's still, the height of the building gets less than twenty feet. It's not like twenty-six feet.
Uh, that, that doesn't matter. Still the same footprint.
Musa?
Yes?
You are very distant. Like echoing, you're hard to hear.
Can you hear him?
I hear him okay. All right, are there any other questions from the board?
What was the answer on the difference in the, the height?
That really doesn't matter, because it's only where footage were going by of the building. He's right, he's, he's, the, the, the law is you have to be under thirty-five feet, and he is.
I was just going by the difference I saw here, that's, uh?
Yeah, well, that, that is a question.
Doesn't matter, I don't have any questions.
Okay, well, I'm asking for, uh, okay, so are there any other questions? Can I, can I entertain a motion? Someone make a motion?
Motion to close public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next application is application twenty twenty dash seven of Deborah Delacroche for a variance of ten feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of front porch to be located twenty-five feet from a front property line at twenty-one Randor Lane, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R twelve point five residential zoning district. I'll have the secretary read the legal notice.
The zoning board of appeals of the Towne Watertown, Connecticut will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July twenty-second, two, two, twenty twenty at seven PM as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following application. Application twenty twenty dash seven of Deborah Delacroche for a variance of ten feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a front porch to be located twenty-five feet from the front property line at twenty-one Radner Lane, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R twelve point five residential zoning district. Section twelve point eight of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum thirty-five feet setback from front property line for a principal building in an R twenty, twelve point five residential zoning district. Pages are stuck together. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this ninth day of July, twenty twenty, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this sixteenth day of July, twenty twenty. Edward Dalton, Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there anyone here to represent the applicant?
I'm Debbie Delacroche, I live at twenty-one Radner Lane, Oakville, Connecticut, and I'm asking for the ten-feet variance for my front porch. My original porch now, the railings are equal to the sides of the door, so when you open up the screen door, you have to back down the stairs. Okay, so, and my mother's ninety years old, so it's getting more difficult for her to come in the house without backing down the stairs when I open the door. I did send out certified letters to my neighbors and I have the five of them, two in front of me, one on each side, and one behind me. And the porch would be about six feet by twenty.
Okay, uh, just for the record, I, I noticed Phil Rogers is here, uh, so I don't think Gary would have to sit in any, anymore for Phil? Our regular member, Phil Rogers, is here.
You can continue as you are, if you'd like. I have some trouble getting on.
Okay, all right, so Gary's still in for, for Phil.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit in and listen.
Okay, so, um, your hardship is, is, uh, the porch is too small for, for an egress out, out of the house?
Correct.
Uh, Musa, did you go over and look at this?
Mr. Chairman, I said, I went there before I came to the meeting. Yes, I might agree with the owner, they had just a small stool. If somebody wants to get into the house, they open the door, they have to back, go, back up on the stairs in order to be open the door and then get into the house. And it's a safety issue for them. By giving them a variance, they make a small front porch and it allows them to be able to be on the porch and at the same time they can open the front door to get into the house.
Okay, and, uh, right now, there's a porch. Right now, there's a porch there with a roof over it?
No.
It's just a stool, it's, there's no porch, just a stool for the stairs.
Okay, okay.
The stool is only probably maybe four by four or five by five, but when you open the, the front door, you cannot, it's staying on this, you have to go on the steps in order to open the door and then climb back and go into the house.
Okay.
And it's like, in the winter, when it is icy or it is snow or something, it is really difficult.
Sure.
And the front door is thirty-six inches wide, so the railings are like equal to the front door, so it's actually like thirty-six inches wide, the stool.
Okay, is, is there anyone from the board have any questions for the applicant?
I think what she's trying to do is a safety issue, because that's dangerous for anybody that's even steady on their feet in the wintertime.
All right. Anyone else have any, any questions for the applicant? Okay, is there anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? So Musa, you want us to wait a couple of minutes?
There is no.
It's a letter submitted from a neighbor, I don't know if you need to read that into the record.
Yeah, we should.
Shelley Magle.
Good. Ned, you want to read that into the record?
I don't have it, my, I can't open my packet, the zip package won't lot open.
Oh, I'll read it.
I haven't, I don't have it either.
I have it.
Okay.
Want me to read it?
Go ahead, and, yeah, sure.
It's addressed to Roseanne. I've been asked to email you on behalf of Debbie Delacroche. Debbie has requested a variance for her property so that she may have a new porch built on the, on her property. I live across the street at twenty-six Radner, uh, Lane and have known Debbie for twenty-seven years, have no problem with her having this porch built. In fact, I think it would be very beneficial. Her steps now do not allow you to enter in the home without backing down first and then entering the home. This I find to be very difficult and dangerous, especially for her elderly mother. I give my permission as one of her, of the neighbors directly across from Debbie's property and existing porch. If you have any questions, you can reach me at my cell phone, two oh three, two oh six, eight nine seven nine. Thank you, Shelley Magle, if that's pronounced correctly.
All right, is there anyone else wish to speak for or against this application? I already asked three times, so do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next application is application twenty twenty dash eight of Pilacy and Ryan, PC, Franklin G. Pilacy for a variance of twenty-one feet from a front yard property, front yard property line, street line setback on Straits Turnpike, a variance of twenty-three point five feet to a front yard property line street on Main Street for construction of a twenty-six point one foot by thirty-eight foot addition to an existing building to be located three point five feet from the front property line on Straits Turnpike and one point five feet from the front block, front property line on Main Street, Watertown, Connecticut, in a BG, General Business Zoning District. Is there anyone here to represent the applicant?
Excuse me?
Oh, could I have the, uh, secretary read the legal notice?
The zoning board of appeals of the Towne Watertown, Connecticut will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven PM as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following application. Application number twenty twenty dash eight of Pilacy and Ryan, PC, Franklin G. Pilacy for, one, a variance of twenty-one and a half feet to a front yard property line, street line setback of Straits Turnpike, and, two, a variance of twenty-three and a half feet to front yard property line, street line setback of Main Street for construction of a twenty-six point one foot by thirty-eight foot addition to an existing building to be located three and a half feet from front property lines on Straits Turnpike and one and a half feet from front property line on Main Street, Watertown, CT, in a BG one, business, General Business One zoning district. Section eighteen point four of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum twenty-five foot setback from front property lines for a principal building in a BG one, General Business One zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this ninth day of July, not twenty twenty, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, the sixteenth day of July, twenty twenty. Edward Dalton, Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Do you have the green cards, were the green cards, uh, brought in?
We received the green card that I had to file.
Okay. Who's here to represent the applicant?
Uh, Franklin Pilacy and George Siflickis. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, uh, again, Franklin Pilacy and George Siflickis in support of the application. Property is located at thirteen hundred Main Street, uh, in Watertown. We did submit, uh, previously, the notice, uh, proof with the affidavit and all of the green cards that we received back. Uh, the owner of the property is GT Holdings LLC. The reason for the variance is, is to, uh, close in the area that is currently, uh, containing the, uh, the patio area. The footprint will not be, uh, any bigger from that perspective and that there is a footprint for the patio there. By what a background and, which is also part of explaining the hardship here. If you look at this property, it's a little bit unique because it's sort of triangular, but it also is, uh, sided on two sides by, by the, uh, two state highways. And as a result of the construction of the two state highways, this property has been significantly reduced from its original size. And that occurred, uh, prior to the adoption of zoning regulations. But if you look at the property, the front of the property has this large triangular grass, uh, landscape, uh, area, but technically, the property line is very, very close to the building. So although it appears that all of this grassed area is part of the property, it really was taken by the state of Connecticut when the highway was widened. And we submitted, uh, with the application a copy of the deeds and a copy of the map that shows the highway taking, uh, or significant amount of property, including that triangular piece that is, that is still there. So it, it appears that all of this property goes together, but the, but the actual boundary lines of the property have been reduced uh, by the state taking property to, to make, uh, the two highways. Now, I submitted a copy of this map, it's a map in Watertown, uh, clerk's office, map number forty-one, and I submitted with the application a copy of the deed from the then owner of the property, uh, to the state of Connecticut. And this occurred, uh, prior to the adoption of zoning regulations. Uh, and we believe that this qualifies as a unique hardship. And by way of example, uh, whenever a property is taken, public purpose typically to, to widen a public highways uh, and reduce the property, then that, that is the kind of impact that is beyond the control of the property owner and, and creates the, uh, unique hardship required for variance. Now, some of you may recall, uh, a number of years ago, probably ten or twelve years ago, maybe more, when the property at the corner of Bunker Hill Road and Straits Turnpike was being, uh, redone with the current, uh, gas station convenience store, they needed a number of variances, and the reason for the variances was exact same reason, exact same hardship, where over the years, each time the highway was, was widened on both sides, uh, they took more and more property and it made the property smaller and smaller. In this case, the state took one big chunk of property and made the property, uh, smaller, uh, and it impacts, uh, how this property can be used. As a practical matter, no one will even know, uh, about a variance in the front because the appearance isn't gonna, isn't gonna really, uh, change from what's there today. You still have all that grassed area that's not being used as any part of the highway or in connection with any type of highway practice, but yet it's, it's there. Uh, and the state owns it, and again, uh, that's caused the problem. There's another, there's another little hardship here that also is significant, and that is that when zoning regulations were first adopted, and probably for about forty years, while the zoning regulations were in place, uh, if you had a corner property, only one side of the property is considered the front. But the zoning regulations have since been amended to tell you that if you have two sides or a corner lot, then both sides on the, on the highway are both frontages are considered just that, front yard areas. So that's a second situation that has impacted. So that's a second situation that has impacted on this property, on the control of the property owner and since the zoning regulations were first adopted. So we believe that that constitutes the big hardship required for variances of this nature. Now, the other part of this is George is gonna speak a little bit as to why he needs to do this. But part of this is that during this current health crisis, it's impacted his business uniquely because now he needs that extra area far more than he ever did in the past. So I'm gonna let George talk a little bit about how that's impacted on the immediate need.
Hi, George Siflickis, four hundred Kimberly Lane in Watertown. I am the owner of the property in question. And with this whole COVID situation, it's kind of made it difficult for us to conduct business and, and the same way we did in the past, as it is for everybody else, it's a whole new ballgame. And the regulations that are imposed on us right now as restaurant owners has made it really impossible for us to pass between elements. The other issue we have is we're, we're having a really hard time getting supplies for our restaurant, such as, you know, masks and, and gloves and chemicals and sanitizer and all that other stuff. So when we do find it, we buy it in bulk. So all our seating area that's in the store right now, that by law would have to be reduced forty two to about the sixteen because of how it was laid out, is pretty much non-existent anyway because of all the room I need for the extra supply. So what I'm looking for as a, my hardship is, is like to enclose the existing patio that's there to protect my, my customers from the elements.
All right. Anyone from the board have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, my, Rick.
Yeah.
Roger.
Okay.
Uh, my only problem is it's so close to the highway. If one, all you need is one truck or a car to go zipping through there. Is there a way to, he can put a good sized, like a road guard barrier across that just to protect the that enclosed area? I realize what he's saying. He's in a bind because I already, he got chopped a lot of spaces. But I'm just worried about, all you need is one truck, one car, one truck going through there and it's gonna take out like thirty people, yeah?
I'll try to answer that. Uh, this is Franklin Pilacy. The, the footprint is not gonna be any greater than it is now. It's just gonna cover the existing patio. And there, there already are guards there to prevent vehicles from entering the area where individuals are presently occupying. But there's absolutely no reason why the additional guards wouldn't be put in. But if, but all of the guards are there now around the whole building, but in particular around this patio. So we're not increasing the footprint i- in terms of going beyond where the patio is now. And there are guards there now in the rear, but there's no reason that guards can't also put in when, when the, when the additional improvement is constructed.
I don't have a problem with, to want to do there. It's just I'm worried about, you know, you get one nut that misses the corner and he goes through, coming through sideways. I always, I drove, didn't see any barriers unless, unless there's a stone wall or something there, but I'd like to see something to keep a truck or something like that going through because they, well, I don't know. You've probably seen the cars go whizzing by there too, even though it's a stop, stop light.
But we do have guards there now and we certainly can, can beef up additional guards when, when the improvement is constructed.
So I, an idea that I have is instead of having a standard foundation, we go higher, make it taller, reinforce it with a rebar and I could put stones, do a stone face on the front of it to make it look attractive for the town. Because it is kind of the hub of the, of the town, the center spot, the whole town. So anything I could do to make it look nicer, I will. And if that includes going to fire the concrete to make it safer, I'll, I'll face it off with flash stones all the around it and I think it'll look very nice. Also, the steps of building the new addition.
Requested before at one time.
It was requested before at one time, but then it was more of a luxury where now it's become an accessory. Back then, it would have been just a, a glass enclosure that would have been able to open up. It would, it would just put a protected patio. There's nothing to protect the, the customers and mine.
Here's a, here's a predicament that I think we're in, is that you can't grant variance for monetary reasons. And if you're saying that you need to enclose this because you need more customer space, that's a monetary reason, unless you can argue that point.
Well, the idea is that you can't grant variance or should not grant the variance if the only reason is a financial, is, is financial nature. In this reason, in this variance, we have a genuine hardship where, where we need a variance because the property that would otherwise be available for the setback was taken from this property by the state of Connecticut to establish those two highways. So in the opinion of any financial considerations, there's a genuine hardship with the taking of the property by the state of Connecticut to enlarge the highways. And that's the classic example of a hardship that is, that, that cited over and over again in the, in the zoning books. So we're not, if.
But that was done before the building was even up, correct?
Correct. It was done, it was, it was done. There was a building there, but it wasn't this building. It was done, but it was also done before zoning. If the state of Connecticut didn't take that, that triangular piece of, of property, really doesn't even look like it's part of the highway. It's all, it's all the grassed area. That area is a part of this property originally. It's still there. It's not used as part of the highway. But nevertheless, when the highway was built, the state took it as additional highway right of way, so to speak. So because of that taking, that took away the property that would otherwise serve as the setback. And that's a classic hardship.
Definitely, I was gonna mention too is I'm not really looking as to increase my revenue. Right now, I don't know if you've driven by, people order outside, right? We have two windows and a takeout window. So there's a total of three windows on the side there on Straits Turnpike that people order and collect their food from. And what they do after they place their order, they go stand on the patio. So what I'm looking to do is protect them from the elements. That's all I'm trying to do now is protect them from the elements. And I look, there's, there's four tables up there now. I'm not gonna really increase it in size. I'm just, all I'm just looking to do is protect the customer from, from the elements.
Now, is there an issue because we've looked at this before and we, I believe denied it or it was removed?
There's, there's no issue for two reasons. One, it's, it's beyond the six month time period. And number two, when it was looked at before, it was, it was unknown to George. He hadn't conducted all the research that needed to be conducted to establish hardship. He didn't present the genuine hardship based on this, the state of Connecticut taking the property before the zoning regulations were adopted. It's where the property was, was reduced in size, then the zoning regulations were adopted. Because that front yard area was taken, it impacts this property uniquely than any other properties in this zoning district. So we do have a legitimate hardship which was not presented a, a number of years ago when George was first thinking of just closing in the patio.
Okay.
Done how I proposed last time, which was just a glass enclosure. This, the, the building's actually gonna be enlarged to all look the same uniform.
Move it to your right.
I will, I will. I'll, I'll put some better ones one by one to kind of see.
Oh, is this really gonna be large? You said the, the building, the building, the picture that you just showed us, it seems larger. So what you're saying is that this addition, whatever, this covering that you're putting in is gonna be the exact same size as the patio that's existing?
It's actually gonna be smaller. It's gonna be a little bit smaller than what it is now.
Okay.
And here's the, the backside from the parking lot. I don't know if you guys could, not written Jones. The backside, it's gonna look like.
Does anyone else from the board have any questions?
And this will be the front side, which will attach to existing building. So it'd all look uniform like it, like it does now.
Rick, I have a question.
Go ahead, Phil.
I was just wondering how, how far is the building actually gonna be from the paved area of the highway? I understand sometimes the property line is different than the paved area.
On the, on the front towards the main street, it's gonna be no closer than it is now. It's gonna be the same. They're, they're just bringing the building out the width of the patio.
Fine, but from Straits, from Straits Turnpike, from the paved area to the building edge?
It's right where the patio is now. It's not going any closer than where the patio is today.
What is that? He's asking how, he's asking what the distance is.
Uh, the distance, I believe, is if I have to, probably around ten feet, ten feet, ten feet about, it's gonna be three point.
That's from the park. He's asking from the road.
Oh, from the road.
From the curb, it will be approximately thirteen point five feet.
Right, so it's.
From the curb, from the paved area of the road.
Yeah, there's a significant portion of the state highway taking line that, that is inside of the actual paved, paved portion of the highway, which is what creates the problem here. They take so much right of way away from the property. It doesn't leave you enough to, to have a reasonable use of the, the path. It's not gonna be any closer than it is right now.
Oh, what about, uh, what a hypothetical now. Just like Bunker Hill, they said they took property frequently. Uh, what hypothetically, what happens if the state decides to take more property for another lane?
Well, if they do, then we'll have to deal with it, but that's not likely because it hasn't occurred here in all this time. But they still have additional land that they haven't used yet.
Yeah, there's about ten feet at least that, that just like curved over and it's not used. It's the little island of asphalt that's not being used.
That's true, pretty much. And again, on both sides of this property, it was sufficient in size originally to accommodate what's needed. But because the state took so much land, and again, it's land that they're not using. So from the public's point of view, this will be no closer to either side of the road or the road on either side than it is right.
Anyone else having, anyone from, anyone else from the board have any other questions? Musa, what's your take on this? You went over and took a look at this situation?
It's up to you. I mean, everybody is familiar with this property. I mean, you've been there before. The only question that I have is that by adding this addition to the building, it would be a larger building. It's the number of parking spaces that they have. Is, are they efficient for this size building? Or they need another variant for the number of parking?
Well, they're not, they're not enlarging the footprint, so it should be okay. I mean, he was approved the last, approved the last time.
They're enlarging the footprint of the building.
I thought he said he's making it smaller in the patio.
They're enlarging the building, making the patio space smaller.
Correct. The amount of tables is not gonna change, gentlemen. It's gonna be less.
Right. But the parking, because you, a patio doesn't count the same as a indoor.
As a building.
As a building, your, your parking is gonna change. The amount of parking needed is going to change.
Change.
Well, I totally agree with that, but also keep in mind is when I first applied and I got the variances back in two thousand and seven or so, since then, we also added more parking spaces when we did the bank, Litchell Bank. We, we took some of that property and backed the bank and extended the parking lot of another twelve or fourteen spots. So I, I feel pretty confident that's, it's within regulation, if not more. So when it was approved back in two thousand and seven, it was approved with less parking spots. And now, since the bank has opened, there's at least another twelve to fourteen more spots.
George, you also pulled on this type plan that you are proposing a twenty five by forty patio pending a state approval. If you have a patio like this addition, there will be more parking spaces required. My question is that if you need a variant for the parking spaces, the commission can table this and have a site walk and maybe you ask for another variance on the same application for your parking spaces. Other than that, if you build the addition, then you have to come back to the commission with another application.
Gotcha. I understand. That makes perfect sense. Yeah, I could definitely look into it if it's on the parking.
I think, I, I would recommend that the commission should table action on this application tonight. And if you want to have a site walk, go there, the, the location of the corner of the building to the road. And also we can, George can do a calculation of how the number of parking spaces. And then we will see if he needs a variant for the parking spaces, he can add to this application. And I will readvertise another legal notice to include that variance on the same application. But if he doesn't want to do that, if he built it at the time and in future if we figure out that he needs more parking spaces, he'd have to come back to the commission. I think it is better to just table action on this application tonight, have a site walk. And then at the same time, George can come and work with me. We can calculate to see how many parking spaces he needs. And if based on the size of the building in the future patio, if he needs a variance, we can add it to his application.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Musa. I really appreciate it.
Okay. Does anyone from the commission have any other questions for the applicant? You guys all set?
I missed. What was the distance between the patio and the highway itself?
It is thirteen point five feet approximately.
How many?
Thirteen point five. One, three point five. Because if you look at the map, there is a fifty point five feet distance from the corner of the building to the property line. And then there is another ten feet right of way for the state, a total of thirteen point five approximately, maybe thirteen or fourteen.
Okay. Everybody all set?
Do, do you want to vote? See that sign?
Well, that's my next thing. I'm gonna get, I wanna make sure that everybody doesn't have any more questions.
You're gonna keep the public hearing open?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we didn't vote yet. Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Do I hear, uh, can I get a motion to table this to, and also, and also schedule a site walk?
There is nobody in the public that they want to talk, just for the record.
Okay. Well, I still gotta, I still gotta ask. So do I have a motion to table this application and schedule a site walk?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
You are not tabling, you are, you are continuing the public hearing next month and have the site walk.
Right. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next application is application twenty twenty dash nine of Michael Zorlo, Zorler for a variance of eight feet to a side yard property line setback for construction of a nine foot by sixteen foot shed to replace an existing non-conforming shed be located twelve feet from a side property line at forty four Ledgewood Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R seventy residential zoning district. Uh, the secretary read the legal notice.
The zoning board of appeals of the town of Watertown, Connecticut will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July twenty second, two, twenty twenty at seven P.M. as a web based meeting to hear and act upon the following application. Application number twenty twenty dash nine of Michael Zoller for a variance of eight feet to a side yard property line setback for construction of a nine foot by sixteen foot shed to replace an existing non-conforming shed to be located twelve feet. to be located twelve feet from a side property line at forty-four Ledgewood Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R seventy residential zoning district. Section twelve point eight of Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum of twenty foot setback from a side property line for an accessory structure in an R seventy residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this ninth day of July twenty twenty, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this sixteenth day of July twenty twenty. The red dot, secretary, zoning board of appeal.
Is there someone here to represent the applicant?
Uh, I am actually the applicant. Michael is my brother.
Okay, and your name?
My name is Connor Zoller. I live at I'm a homeowner at forty-four Ledgewood Road.
Okay, what is your hardship and what uh for for this shed?
Uh, I uh am applying for this hardship because of uh my leaching fields extend out my backyard and uh every other place that I would be able to place this shed would either be up against the uh state would be up against the backyard property line that shares with uh Litchfield Road. Um, uh, right now it's an R seventy zone. Uh, I have twenty-five thousand square feet of land. Um, so right there, that creates a hardship for me. Uh, and currently, yeah, the setback is twenty feet and I was uh, I was replacing an old shed that was there and I was increasing the size of it. And I didn't realize that I needed a zoning uh zoning permit. I thought I didn't need a zoning permit because you don't need a building permit for sheds under certain sizes. So um, I started building the shed and then I realized I needed this meeting. So currently, the shed is actually twelve feet from the property line with conservative measurements, um, not eight. So it would be a setback of uh twelve feet.
So you had an existing shed there or this is the shed that you built without notifying the town?
I had an existing shed there and I wanted to modify it, which made it longer, but not uh not wider.
So you're leaving the you're leaving the existing shed and you're going to add on to it?
Uh, well, it was a metal shed and I wanted to just replace it with a wooden shed. So the 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 setback that the shed had previously would be maintained, but it would, I would extend the base, increasing the length of it.
Okay, any anyone else from the board have any questions for the applicant?
How high is the fence and how high is the shed?
The fence currently with uh me standing at it, I'm five eleven and it barely stands taller than me. Um, so I would say it's just under six feet. Um, the shed at its tallest, it is thirteen feet. Um, yeah, at the tallest.
So you got a six foot fence with a thirteen foot bill. I was I was thinking this was just six feet, just about even, and it wouldn't be too bad. The neighbors have a problem with it?
Uh, I would say yes.
The neighbors have a problem with the shed?
They had a problem with the previous shed and they're they were they were complaining about that shed for a long time because it was a metal shed and it was rusted and it was falling apart. The doors weren't even on it. Um, and I was using it to store things because I had a house fire. So uh, now that I finally like moved into my house and am bringing my yard up to like uh respectable standards, um, I decided to replace that shed uh with siding and everything for it to match my house and uh they had a problem with that.
Uh, motion, did he did he turn in his green cards?
Yes.
Right, so um, I don't see any letters from your neighbors that's complaining or anything, I see.
One of the neighbor has some concern about this, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to explain a little bit of the situation. Uh, Mr. Zoller has an existing shed and it is non-conforming. And he wants to replace that shed with the exact size. He doesn't need a variance. I can issue a zoning permit for him. If he wants to replace the existing uh shed with the exact size of the exact location. Because he wants to make it larger, he's basically enlarging the a non-conforming structure. That's why he's a part of you. And the next neighbor has some concern. I think they are, are they there?
Is a neighbor here? I could ask them after. Anyone from the board have any questions for the applicant?
He moved to the other side, like behind the kitchen, the dining room area? Set it back further from the property, but inside the the leaching field. You know, not inside the leaching fields, but you know, where would be uh in compliance, but behind the dining room area.
Behind the dining room area, there's um, there was a pond that was buried there and I have a concern about um by the previous owner. And I haven't really gone into digging it up, but I remember it was buried when they they dug a septic line that runs from that side from the far side of the house. And there's a septic line that runs all the way across the back of the yard that I'm also hesitant about messing with.
That's a new leach field you got then?
Uh, it's it's not, the leaching field isn't that new. I would say the leaching field is quite old. We're actually um probably going to go for a permit within the next month to have new leaching field or new boxes for the leaching fields.
There is a map and you are tagged that shows the location of the leaching fields. Take a look.
Want to take a look at this one, Rick?
Oh, well, wait a minute. Let me have let me have everybody talk and then we'll discuss that. Um, does anyone from the board have any other questions? Everybody outside? Is there anyone from the is there anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Richard.
Go ahead.
Richard Mickey, twenty-four Ledgewood Road.
Go ahead, sir.
All right. I the back of my house is up against the where the shed is at. I maybe have twenty foot of backyard. And uh, you know, it's it's coming in too close. Their footprint's getting bigger and bigger over there. And uh, I just don't, I don't see a hardship. I mean, yeah, that that uh shed that they used to have was maybe eight by ten at the most. And uh, if you need a twenty foot from the uh from the uh my property line, how what's can that shed be up against that his existing building or is there supposed to be like a fifteen feet setback?
There is no setback requirement between the two buildings.
What's that?
There is no setback requirement between the two buildings. That shed can be close to the building.
Oh, so that their shed can be right up against their house?
If they want to.
Yes. All right. So so they're wanting to encroach onto my property line. And uh, they seemed to build and then go for variances. You know, they did that on the other side.
What did they build on the other side?
Well, when they put up their building that burnt down, um, I guess they had to get a variance from the neighbor on the other side. Um, but what I'm saying is their footprint keeps getting bigger. And uh, you know, I don't have much of a backyard. I got a big front yard, but that's, you know, we're we're talking about trying to put a shed on our property and Watertown keeps saying fifty feet from from Route sixty-three, fifty feet in from Ledgewood Road or whatever, it uh twenty feet from the back. So it's like, um, I don't know, I just we're having a problem. Yeah, they want an eight foot variance. So it's like.
And we don't want to give it to them.
Okay.
May I speak?
Go ahead.
Uh, I believe there's a misconception about what a variance is to my neighbors. Um, I've heard it from um them and I've also heard it from the neighbor across the street. Uh, they believe that um I'm like expanding my property when I apply for these variance meetings. Uh, when um, I know that I'm just asking for permission to maintain the line in the previous variance and this one, uh, it does claim eight feet, but based on measurements off of the um off of the A one variant or the A two survey that was done for my septic system, it's closer to twelve. And that's a conservative measurement. That's me bumping up all the numbers. If it was nine feet, ten inches, I would bump it up to ten feet. Um, I would just do that. Um, so uh, I am maintaining the distance where the previous shed was. Um, and uh, I had the neighbor across the street uh threaten to tear down his shed and dump it in my front yard if I don't uh comply with what they want. So uh I just heard it. Uh, I stopped building the shed as soon as I realized it needed a a variance meeting as well. I thought it was because I was modifying an existing structure that I didn't need a a zoning permit, which I was wrong. And I um, the only thing I did to the shed after I found out was add paper to protect the plywood. And I haven't um added shingles or I haven't touched it since.
Like Musa stated, if you put the exact same shed you have there, you don't need a variance. You're 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 increasing the footprint. That's the only reason why you need a variance. You could you could just remodel that shed that you had or take it down and put the same, you know, if it's metal, you could make it out of wood, just use the same footprint, but you want to make it bigger. So that's why you need a variance.
Yes.
Yes, but the victim shed is grandfathered because it's an existing non-conforming, but not that they want to maintain or replace it with the same size and same location, they have the right to do that. And we will issue a zoning permit from him. And they said they want to they want to make their non-conforming structure larger. That is why they need a variance.
See, and this board really doesn't like to uh increase uh nonconformity. We try to keep nonconforming things, you know, at a minimum. So, you know, it's kind of tough.
Since you already scheduled a sidewalk for that other application, if you want, you can go and see this at like five o'clock and then five thirty, you can go and see the other one. I think it's better to just go and see the situation before you make a decision on it.
Right. Hey, does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Oh, you said you had something or not? You're good? Okay, do I have a motion to uh table this until the next meeting with a with a sidewalk, scheduling a sidewalk? Is there a motion?
Make that motion for table this.
Give a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do you have something you wanted to say?
Hi, yes. Um, I'm not really want to push off uh issues such as this. It was preferred that the shed is moved and I will rebuild uh the shed that was there. Um, if I have, if I can find permission to move that shed to the back end of my property where it's closer to the state line, it would still need a variance, but I would um, I would also uh give that option up. I would move the shed and uh, just build the one that was grandfathered in.
Could you repeat that?
He's saying he would add a shed farther back, build the exact shed there and add a smaller one back farther.
So he'd have two sheds.
Right, so I mean, if we do a sidewalk, if you want to pull this pull this application and just build your own shed the same size as it was, you're you can do that. And then go for a variance for the other one if you need it. If we go do a sidewalk and we determine it's okay, you may be able to do this one.
Okay, I just wanted to give the option. Thank you.
Yeah, you can still have that option, so. And if you're going to need a variance, we're going to have to come look at it anyway. So while we're there, we could discuss other locations.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next application, application number twenty twenty dash ten of Michael Bono Bonoey for a variance of eight feet to a rear property line setback for construction of an eighteen by fourteen three season room to replace an existing deck be located twenty-two feet from a rear property line at Morin Street, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R twelve point five residential zoning uh district. Uh, the secretary read the legal notice.
Zoning Board of Appeals of the town of Watertown, Connecticut will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven P M. as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following application. Application twenty twenty dash ten of Michael Botat for a variance of eight feet to a rear yard property line setback for construction of an eighteen foot by fourteen foot three season room to replace an existing deck to be to be located twenty-two feet from rear property line at twenty-five Morin Street, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R twelve point five residential zoning district. Section twelve point eight of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum thirty foot setback from rear property line for a principal building in an R twelve point five residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this ninth day of July twenty twenty, dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this sixteenth day of July twenty twenty. Every dollar, secretary, zoning board of appeal.
Is uh someone here to represent the applicant?
Michael Buttatt.
What is your hardship?
Our hardship is uh possible um in my mother-in-law moving in with us in the near future. My father-in-law had a bone marrow transplant last year and um he's seventy-seven years, seventy-six years old and just a little more room in the upstairs living space for our possible family uh moving in with us.
What does this porch have to do with that part of you?
Um, our porch is off our dining room, which is only um ten by fourteen. We're just looking to uh remove the porch and put a ten by eighteen uh enclosed uh sun porch on just to extend our living space in our dining room a little bit. It's uh only going to be three season. Um, our existing deck now is uh thirty feet off of our property line. And um, that was built to code probably in seventy-nine when the house was built. And now we're just looking to extend it a little farther. Uh, make it uh twenty-two feet off our property line, make the room fourteen by eighteen. Um, we've spoke to um our surrounding five neighbors and uh we have we haven't had any disagreements with anybody. Everybody seems to be okay with it. We received um all the cards that we were supposed to get back. We sent out our certified mail to get these cards back and um that's what we're asking for today.
Okay. Anyone from the board have any questions of the applicant? Anyone from the board have any questions for the applicant?
What was the complete hardship on this, Rick? I missed some of it.
Uh, mother-in-law, father-in-law are moving in and I guess they wanted to uh extend their dining room to make it a little larger so that uh they can accommodate them being there. So uh, so they want to extend, uh, they want to turn their deck into a three season room. so they want to extend, uh, they want to turn their deck into a three season room.
What, what's the size of the deck right now?
The existing deck is, uh, ten by fourteen. Ten, the ten foot width is, uh, thirty feet off our property line. We're looking to make the deck, uh, enclosed, uh, sun porch eighteen by fourteen, leaving the width, the existing. And, um, it'll be, uh, twenty-two feet off our property line if we extend, if we get the variance.
What's, hey, Musa, what's the current regulation to the?
The current regulation is thirty feet.
Starting from rear property line and R twelve point five zoning district is thirty feet. The existing deck is that setback, it is thirty feet from the property line. If they want to remove the deck and put a three season room, that will be twenty-two feet from the property line. They need a variance of three feet.
Correct.
Are there any other questions from the app, for the applicant?
Would you be interested in a sidewalk, Rick?
This is, this is really a temple issue. I mean, there is nothing to see because I went here before I came to the meeting. I can see the deck is there. If you move the deck and put a three season room, and it will be twenty-two feet from the rear property line. But if you want to go and see it, it's up to you.
Really? So Musa, you're saying that this is, uh, um, rear property. So, I mean, what's behind it? Another house?
Uh, there's a, we have a fence. There's a, there's a set of hedges that, um, run on the property line. They're about nine feet tall. And those, those are gonna continue to stay there. We're not touching those.
And we got their sheet, we got their card back too, saying it was okay.
Okay.
And they have thirty feet setbacks from the property line in the house behind that also have a minimum of thirty feet. A total of like sixty feet open space. I mean, it's not like they are going to be close to their building.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. Okay.
Nope, we'll be away.
Okay. Anyone from the board have any other questions for the applicant? I have to ask if anyone from the public has any, uh, wanted to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay. Go right into the, the regular meeting. Paper's all over in a minute. In this hat. I can't find the regular meeting.
That's not the same agenda. Page three, page two.
Okay, I have it. Hold on one minute here. Okay, action, okay. Okay, action on minutes? For the regular meeting of June twenty-fourth, do I have a motion?
I say I have a motion to approve the, the meeting notes from, uh, I don't have the date here.
June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth, right? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, uh, review of zoning board of appeals bylaws. You guys want to go through that tonight or you want to wait till we can see one another in the meeting?
You only have three months in there. Don't change, unless you want to make changes. The only change that I need is I change the name of the board members. And board members, they are not on the board anymore. Can I put the new members' names there?
What do you guys want to do? You want to table it or you want to?
Table it, Rick, because I just got mine today.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business. Application twenty twenty dash seven of Deborah Delacrain for a variance of ten feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a front porch to be located twenty-five feet from a, from a property line at twenty-one Rander Lane, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R twelve five residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Yeah, we just got in the picture. He had no shirt on.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to approve this?
Second.
Okay. Uh, I guess, I guess this, this does merit, uh, 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 hardship. And the hardship is pretty much safety because the, uh, the way out of this house right now is too small. And, um, now they need to, they need to add the sign so they can get out of, out of the house carefully. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
New business, application. Oh, hold on a minute. Now that was an old business. Okay. New business, well, then we just did hers. Okay, application twenty twenty dash eight of Pelosi and Ryan, P C, Franklin G. Pelosi for two variances from a front.
What's that? That one was tabled.
We gotta still, we gotta still read it. It's in the new, it's in the meeting. Application number twenty twenty dash eight of Pelosi and Ryan, P C, Franklin G. Pelosi for two, Pelosi for two variances from a front yard property line setback for construction of a twenty-six by one foot by thirty-eight foot addition to an existing building to be located three point five feet from the front yard property line on Straight Sturm by and one point five foot from the front property line on Main Street, Watertown, Connecticut, in a BG general business, business zoning district. Well, uh, we have a motion and a second and we approve this application to be, um, to be scheduled, uh, a sidewalk and to, uh, we tabled it for the next meeting and also we're scheduling a sidewalk to go see this property.
You didn't make a motion to approve. You just continued the public hearing.
We had, we made a motion to table it.
Yes.
Right. And schedule a sidewalk.
Five o'clock is good, five P M.
Five o'clock's good. Yeah.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, application number twenty twenty dash nine of Michael Zoller for a variance of eight feet to a side yard property line setback for construction of a nine foot by sixteen foot shed to replace an existing non-performing shed to be located twelve feet from a side property line at forty-four Ledgewood Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R seventy residential zone. Um, I'd like to entertain the motion again. I mean, let, let's, uh, so do I have a motion to, uh, table this and schedule a sidewalk for the next meeting?
Oh, no, you did that.
I understand. I'm going through, I'm going through each application as we're going along, so.
Five thirty P M. It's good?
Five thirty, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Next application, application twenty twenty dash ten of Michael Bono, Bono? Buttatt. Buttatt for a variance of eight feet to a rear property line setback for construction of an eighteen foot by fourteen foot three season room to replace an existing deck to be located twenty-two feet from a rear property line at twenty-five Morin Street, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R twelve point, point five residential zoning district. Just the same thing too. We're gonna schedule a sidewalk to go out and look at this property. Um, Musa, what time do we do that one?
You want, you want to go and see this? I thought that you don't want to, but it's up to you.
Do we, do we vote not to see this or we're gonna go see it? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Uh, I guess the hardship here was that they have their in-laws moving in the property and they want to increase the, uh, area of their dining room. So I guess everyone could be seated for dinner at the same time and also make it that, um, they have, uh, a larger space for everyone to gather. And it's a three season room, so, um, there's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So Chairman, you, you escaped one item, item seven A. New business?
Michael Zerlo?
Seven A.
What time?
The old business. We have to do number one of it.
Application number twenty twenty dash seven.
What time you want that? What time did you say to sidewalk? B?
No, the sidewalk was five thirty. That's good. You, you escaped one of the items on the agenda. New business, seven A. You didn't make a motion for that.
Number A?
We went down a sidewalk today.
Hold on.
Under new business.
Was that I, that was I in, uh?
Right pack.
I'm sorry.
Right pack. Yep, I'm sorry.
One, one, Rander Lane. You skipped that.
We didn't skip Rander Lane. I think we skipped, uh, we skipped Ledgewood. Chimney Road. Chimney Road we skipped.
But chimney road, you approve.
We approved. So which one did we skip? We did.
Skip seven A under new business.
Seven A, new business.
Right, we did that one.
Oh, we did.
We did. We, we granted the approval for it.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do.
We closed the public hearing.
That was public hearing. You closed the public hearing.
Right, and we just voted, and we just voted to approve the porch for safety. Okay, we can do it over.
No porch, it's a building to pull.
They said the front porch.
The front porch.
Yes, you didn't approve it. You closed the public hearing. You just made a motion.
So application number twenty twenty dash seven of Deborah Delacarance for a variance of ten feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a front porch to be located twenty-five feet from a front, from a front property line at twenty-one Rander Lane, Oakville, Connecticut, in an R twelve point five residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Third second.
Business.
Hey, guys, we already, we already approved this application. We're approving it again. So do I have a second?
Yes, second.
And I went through the whole thing. The hardship here was that they can't, it's a means of egress to get out of their, to get out of their house. The porch that they had is too small. They have to back down the stairs and she has an elderly mother living there. And so, uh, this was her hardship was to make this porch larger so that they could get in and out of the house, uh, safely. So there's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
So I think old business B, Rick.
Old business B. Franklin Pelosi, we, we're going on a sidewalk.
Yes.
B. Is, is the? Old business B.
Oh, the high, high pack. That's what I just said before. You guys, okay. Application number twenty twenty dash five of I N high pack for a variance of twenty-five feet to a front yard property line setback for interior lots for construction of a thirty by forty-two barn to be located fifty feet from a front property line at one seventy-three Chimney Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R ninety residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, and, um, his hardship here is, uh, location of this barn. I mean, if he, if he moves it, it would, it would kind of, it would kind of, uh, uh, make his driveway a little different. You'd have to move the driveway over and he set back, uh, from the road and his neighbor doesn't have any problem with it. He has five acres of land. So, uh, motion on the floor and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, communications and bills, none. Reports from committee, none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Good night.
Good night, fellas. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Can I do the sidewalk for the next meeting?
Yes, yes, yes.